I want to call a meeting in order. As usual, we will start with public comment. The only thing I'd like to add is if your comment is related to the subject that is already on the agenda to be addressed, I hold your comment until we get into that discussion. And we will take comments from the floor. So, if anybody has a comment they'd like to address, come to the podium. Look at the selectmen. You have three minutes. Anyone? No takers?
Question, is it just for anything on, any stuff that's on the agenda specifically, or do you want us to go in order? Or how would you?
No, as I said, if it's something that's on the agenda and that's what your commentary is about, then we can wait till we get to that item on the agenda.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, good. So, let's start. Larry Kenberg.
On our April 3 meeting of the Recreation Commission, we were approached by Joff Carlton, Maximum Velocity, to see if we would be interested in sponsoring Maximum Velocity under the Recreation Commission so that they could run their programs. One of the key issues that he had was the increased fees over what they had been paying in the past for the use of the fields. So, he proposed, which you have an attachment to, he proposed to us to provide certain services if we would sponsor them. But I do want to make a point that they're not asking for something for nothing. They're not asking not to pay. They're just looking to get a more reasonable rate under the old fees rather than the new fees. If you'd like, Mr. Cartman's here, and if you'd like him to address slightly.
Sure. Joff. Joff Carlton, 24 Sawyer Road, Lee, New Hampshire. Maximum Velocity, that's a non-profit organization. We've been running footsaw and soccer for the community and other communities for over five years. Last year, we utilized Little River Park and Stevens Field with that. We would like to continue. We met with the Rec Commission, and we asked that we be sponsored like the men's basketball teams sponsored by the Rec Commission in the Town of Lee. That way, we could utilize the field, offer some opportunities for the Rec Commission. We would like to run pickup soccer on Thursday evenings, free of charge, for any child that would like to come. We are willing to offer discount for a camp that we'd like to run this summer. The one thing that we asked for was for the fee to be held at what it was last year, which was $25 per use. When we used Stevens Field, we brought in our equipment, we rented the porta potty, and we lined the fields. So, all costs were there. We're not looking for money from the town. We don't need it. We don't see a want for it. We want to be able to offer a service for the kids.
Any questions? When would you be using it? You said Fridays? And we need to get some dates and times and...
Sure. So, during the summertime, we'd like to do pickup on Thursday evenings. In the fall, we'd like to use it five o'clock on, Monday through Friday, Saturdays and Sundays, for which we're willing to pay the $25 per use, per day, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then when we use it for the games on Saturday. There's not as many games on Sundays, but there is the potential of a game on Sunday.
If I may, the town administrator, who else uses the field?
Well, just a point of clarification. When you said you're going to use it seven days a week, is that Stevens Field, or is that the field at Little River Park?
We'd like to use Little River Park. If we need to use Stevens Field, we're happy to use Stevens Field also.
And so, the seven-day-a-week schedule would be starting...
Mid-August.
And going till...
First week of November.
Okay. In answer to your question, Oyster River Youth uses not Stevens Field. They didn't use Stevens Field last year, I don't believe, but they use certainly Little River Park for their, I think it's cross program. I think all of the soccer is on Tibbetts Field, but they certainly use it for lacrosse. So, I guess, I mean, that would be a question that I have. It sounds like, other than during the day, because you said this is starting at five?
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Okay. It would preclude anyone else, I think, from using the field between five and whatever time.
One as sun sets.
Yeah. Seven days, seven days a week?
On Saturday and Sunday, we can give this schedule for when the games would be there. So, for example, you have the town fair, which the weekend is all blocked off, so you wouldn't be able to use it then.
Correct.
So, through the league, we would make sure that we don't have any home games. So, it would be just utilizing it for our home games.
So, this is, the use that you're talking about isn't specific to Town of Lee children? This is your program through Maximum Velocity?
We have 15 students from the Town of Lee from last spring. We have 18 from this fall. We also have kids from Durham, Lee, and Madbury.
Okay.
Collectively, I think we pay over $150,000 in taxes between those 15 people.
And how, so, okay, so I guess I kind of answered one of my questions, although I was trying to figure out how the scheduling with ORYA was going to work, but the board proved this. It sounds like...
Happy to coordinate with them.
Right.
I'm sorry, what?
He says he's been keeping...
I'm happy to coordinate with them.
But it sounds as if it was pretty clean with any other use, Monday through Friday, five to sunset.
Scott, that would be my question too, because we already have an agreement with Oyster River Youth. They schedule the fields, and there's a priority that's already set in place in terms of... So, if you work within that, I'm okay with that. I did have a question in terms of the usage that is, that you use Stevens Field now, is that scheduled through meetings? How does that work?
I didn't use Stevens Field. That was last fall.
Last, last year.
Last fall, last fall.
Last fall?
Right.
Last fall, we used Stevens.
No, it would have been scheduled through ORYA. We, Selectman's Office does not do any field scheduling.
Even for Stevens.
Even for Stevens.
Okay. So, yeah, if, I'm okay with it as long as they schedule it through Oyster River Youth, and there's a pecking order in terms of, like, the town gets first refusal if something else happens, so...
Well, that's, that's always been the case where the town gets first refusal on anything going on in the park, or... And I do believe the intent with Maximum Velocity is to coordinate the schedule with ORYA. It wasn't just to bump them off, but it was to coordinate.
Okay. Well, okay, then let me just, and I, obviously, I don't have ORYA's schedule, so I don't know exactly when they use...
Well, they would have, they would have to coordinate with ORYA.
Okay.
Get ahold of their schedule and coordinate the field usage.
Okay.
And I have Tibbetts, too. They use Tibbetts for soccer.
Yeah.
Right, but we don't, I don't want to say we don't care about Tibbetts, though.
Yeah, that's not our...
But that's not within our curvews.
Right.
Okay.
But the Rec Commission, when we were approached about this, we thought it was a good idea to have, you know, an alternative opportunity for the town kids to have another program available, and especially in light with what's come up with ORYA, I think it's not a bad idea. And the Rec Commission did vote unanimously to respond to that.
I guess the only other thought I would have is that there are other leagues that utilize our fields, and they are paying the new fees. I, actually, I don't know. I don't want to say I assume that they have Lee children or residents in their programs, so I don't know whether we then want to offer them the same thing. Do you know what I mean? Like, so that if they were also sponsored by the Recreation Commission, then they would not pay the increased fees?
Who are these other people?
Again, they're scheduled through ORYA. There's different leagues. Some of them are using the baseball field, which is not what we're talking about tonight.
Right, exactly.
There's other uses of the fields, although, I mean, just because it's a baseball field, somebody else might make the same argument.
As far as I know, the fields are just being utilized by ORYA, other than the baseball field.
In fiscal year '18, we received $1,535 in use fees, so...
From who?
From the people using the fields. And that's not ORYA.
Okay.
And that money goes into the Recreation Revolving Fund. So...
Well, my opinion is, I do agree with Scott Mooney. It's going to be worked out with Oyster River Youth Association, and I'm not enthusiastic about waiting at faith. We set the faith for everybody, and it should remain the same. So... That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
There's two of us.
We are a nonprofit, basically.
Well, I have a couple of concerns. One, obviously, is that we don't want to get in a conflict between you and ORYA over the use of the field. If, if it's possible to work with ORYA and come up with a schedule that suits, suits your requirements and their requirements, and that obviously would be the absolute best thing that we could come up with, I don't, I don't think that we're ready to do anything with the fees right now. But if you've, you've got Lee children that you're recruiting that are signing up, I mean, the park is for, is for the people of Lee. You're just adding a service for them to train the children, coach the children, have some fun, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, if we can put this together without getting in a big conflict with ORYA, if the two of you can work out a schedule that's satisfactory, then, then I think it's, I think it's worthwhile trying it out.
Does ORYA pay $100 an hour?
I'm sorry?
Does ORYA pay $100 an hour for Little River Park?
I personally don't know what ORYA pays.
No.
So, they're a nonprofit based out of Durham. We're a nonprofit based out of Lee. And we have citizens from Durham, Lee, and Madbury.
What were the fees before we increased them?
I think it was $35 per use.
And now it's...
Now it's per hour.
Oh, I see.
It's $50 an hour to use half the field, $100 an hour to use the full field. You can rent UNH Stadium Football Stadium for $100 an hour. And they provide everything.
One observation I might make, we are sponsoring ORYA to a pretty penny of taxpayer dollar. So, I think, whole things being equal, I don't think the request that Joff is asking is unreasonable, especially with the services he's willing to offer.
That's true. I will just remind the board that ORYA does, I think it's, what, 13 different programs? Would you include that? And obviously, most of them don't utilize our fields.
So, you would have to go through Oyster River Youth Association to get on the field to use it?
That's the way it's structured right now, yeah. Unless it's the town, or the Recreation Commission, or one of the other commissions.
What's the possibility if, and I know Mr. Cartman would like to use Oyster River Park, Little River Park, what if we allowed him to use Stevens Field at the old rate? Would that work? Oh, no, I'm saying, again, this works for me. Would this, that be acceptable to Mr. Cartman?
I'd be happy to use that, but I also have 11 v 11, and this field here is literally... So, in soccer, you have 9 v 9, 7, excuse me, let me start, 7 v 7, which is U9 through U10 or under. U11 and 12 are 9 v 9, and then you have 13 and up, which is 11 v 11. So, an 11 v 11 pitch is roughly 65 to 75 yards wide by 100 to 120 yards long. So, that's what Little River Park, Little River Park is 120 yards long by 75 yards wide with an eight-foot barrier all the way around it for that. I am more than happy to use this if I have to use this, but when you start getting 13, 14, and 15-year-old kids on a field like this, you need more space. I did use it last fall. I'll make anything work. I'm a chameleon. But we'd also like to be able to use that field, maybe a couple nights a week for our older kids. No problem for our younger kids.
Let me make a suggestion to the chair, then. Have you go back and deal with the Oyster River Youth Association and try to schedule something, and maybe it could be a mix, then some Little River Park and some at Stevens Field. Just give us some kind of schedule, or number of times, or something along that way, and then I think we should have a consideration at that time.
Time contact Matt. We'll get a copy of their schedule and see, you know, discuss it with him and see how we can integrate this in some way that works.
So, as Scott was saying, you know, the Stevens Field, we're not going to reduce the rate, maybe not Little River Park, but I'd like to see the rest of this stuff go down anyways. At least we can have a little bit more of the information. So, if you can talk about how many people, the times you play in Stevens Field, and how many times you want to play in Little River Park, at least we have more information and we can make a fall decision.
Okay, so where do we stand right now?
Do I stand, well, my opinion, we, you know...
We're receptive.
We're receptive to the idea of things...
We need more information, and we need to understand how it's going to work, with, how you can put it together with ORYA.
Okay, okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Not a, you know, I would hold it to a solid schedule, but a proposed schedule, number of times here.
So, we can use it for the fee that we paid last fall?
Yeah, I haven't made that decision yet.
So, you just want a schedule?
I propose that we allow you to use Stevens Field at last year's rates.
Okay.
That's what I proposed. They haven't accepted that.
Okay.
But I think if, maybe if you look at how many you can do at Stevens Field and how many you can do at Little River Park, I don't know what that breaks down to. Maybe the majority of the games are Stevens Field, and you can get a cheaper rate, but that, they're looking for a schedule.
Yeah, I can do two nights down at Little River Park for the older kids. Let's just hypothetically say it's a Monday and a Wednesday. And then I can run the practice for the younger kids, easy enough here at Stevens Field.
You're moving in the right direction. Absolutely.
Yeah. Compromise.
One more question. Would you also be able to provide insurance?
We've provided insurance to the town for the past three, four years, so yes.
Just a question.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, so, should we, should we try and get this, if you can get that, by saying next, get on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can, hopefully, we can bring it to a conclusion.
Okay. We'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm here. Can I bring you up to date on a couple of other things that are going on?
Sure.
Since you have such a busy agenda today.
Yes.
Concert series. Unfortunately, we had it canceled Tuesday, or Thursday, but the last one, the week before, we had over 60 people there. The feedback I'm getting is phenomenal, so I think that that's, that's a home run for all of us. So, we're going to continue that and fill in a few of the blanks, and obviously, being outdoor weather-related, we have to roll with that issue. But we had families come out, picnic, and use the grills and stuff like that, so building good community. So, that's working. Model Rocket Day coming up, I believe it's July 23rd. We're in good shape for that. We had, we had about 55, 60 people there last year. We've got all the supplies that we need, thanks to Julie. We've got that worked out. And we are bringing a new member aboard to the commission, so it'll give us a full commission once we have that person installed. So, that's about it.
Larry, I need to ask one question, man.
I'm sorry?
Just need to ask a question.
It's the 21st.
In our proposal, we offer to do pickup on Thursday evenings, and I would like to start that next week. Is that acceptable by the board? Because it's free of charge, and we're willing to do it.
I don't know, because I don't know if the fields are open or...
I think they are, but I don't know. So, that'd be on...
So, you guys don't know if they're open at all? That would be at Stevens Field.
That'd be at Stevens.
If it's on Stevens Field and it's open...
Oh, no, excuse me. That's at Little River Park. There's bands going on. Families can bring their kids. They can watch the bands, and kids can play pickup soccer.
Okay, if you could, I think if you could touch base with the town administrator and make sure that the field is available, just to be sure.
They can check with the Oyster River people. They're the ones that schedule.
Sorry?
You can check with Oyster River.
Yeah, check with Oyster River.
Oyster River schedules the field, so, okay, so, so we're clear? Is this at the reduced rate, at no rate?
It's, we haven't decided yet, so it's at whatever it is.
I thought he, I just...
I'm asking for pickup that's free of charge.
Yeah, he just wants to start that now.
I just wanted to pick up on Thursday nights for the kids.
But that's usually...
Free of charge.
...the field, though, right? And we didn't agree to reduce the field, so, at this particular time. So, if you have it, you're going under the rules that are in place right at the moment, which is...
So, hypothetically speaking, if I went there with my kids, I'm a Lee resident, and I'm at, I set up my two goals, and I play soccer there, and anybody else that just joins in, and I'm just doing a hypothetical here. Bands going on. Somebody that's there has to pay for it?
No. If you're scheduling the field, you're reserving it. Basically, that's what you're doing.
But if I just wanted to show up and play?
It's not against nobody's reserve, then.
I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, so...
The fact is, you asked to schedule the field so you could have a pickup game, okay?
Yes, I did.
That's the question. The answer is, okay, but there is a fee, and that's in place. Certainly, if the town, if somebody went there with their kids and set up the goal and started kicking the ball, that's different than what we're talking about.
Okay.
That's the conflict I don't want to get into.
Correct. No, no, I agree.
All right.
Wholeheartedly agree.
Okay.
Wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
All right. Let me find my way. Matt Smith, Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Can you hear?
Yes, sir.
Always.
Sure, so I just saw the call for a committee for the Town of Lee for the Solid Waste Advisory, and I figured I may as well jump into that, because I've been managing UNH's key recovery composting facility, which is only Hook Road. I've designed commercial composting systems for US, Canada, Japan, Spain, Czech Republic, and a bunch of other countries. So, I have a lot of experience with solid waste, especially the composting realm, and also alternative energy in terms of recovering energy from the byproduct. I have three degrees from UNH. BS in environmental conservation studies, and master's in resource economics, and then PhD in natural resources. I'm a Lee resident, grew up on Camp Brown Road, so I'm one of the locals UNH can get rid of, so I've been here for a long time. So, yeah, I figured I could offer the town my knowledge in composting and learn from other people on the committee as well.
We welcome you.
Okay. You sold us, no?
We certainly have. We certainly have some issues coming up in front of us relative to the solid waste disposal.
I'm going to ask the town administrator, how many other interested parties?
Three others who couldn't come tonight. They're scheduled in, over the next couple of meetings.
Great.
Sounds good. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks. So, I'd like to enter a motion, move to approve a full three-year membership appointment to Matt Smith to serve on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I have a second. Any discussion? With this favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Jeff, one to sign?
Yep.
Scott Budby, Heritage Commission.
You had in your packet a request to approve putting up 12 banners. It's a thing we have to fill out for Eversource, so, and as you noticed, four of them are already up anyways, but, yeah, you have to fill out the forms and then do Eversource.
You should have a set in front of you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I said you should have a set of these in front of you. Should be the next one.
There's a map for the ones that, for Eversource. The rest of them are the co-op. They don't really care.
Okay.
So, and then there's a map of all the banners we're going to put up and which ones we're going to put up. So, there's four different banners. There's the farmer's market, which I've already seen. There's going to be a patriotic one. There's going to be one for Little River Park, and there's going to be one for Welcome to Lee. And there's a legend to show you where each one of those are going to be located.
I think it's good.
And we have to get them up soon, because the person that I have in the highway department is retiring, and the other two are not interested in helping me with them.
Yes, we have to...
We have to hurry.
We have to make haste, to be honest.
So, I just need the board's approvals to one, to fill out the form, Mr. Brown, to sign it.
So, I make a motion, a move to approve the request to hang banners on utility poles as presented, and to execute the forms necessary for the Town of Lee to obtain permission from the utility companies to attach banners to their poles. Do I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All of a sudden, what happened to him?
Something in the water.
Maybe he took some training or something.
Come pressure, look.
Oh, yeah. I got paper, I got paper.
You got paper.
All right, we're moving on. Chris Bird, 31, James Farm Road.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and address you all. Thank you very much. Obviously, as it says there on the agenda, I'm concerned with the lack of posting of the speed limit, and then as I got into my research, as far as the RSA's are, what the default is for what James Farm Road neighborhood is defaulting to is a, I guess, is rural classification, which is an automatic 35 mile an hour posting. I see Mr. Downey's here, and he can attest to this. I think driving through the 1.1 mile stretch of James Farm Road, the circle there, past Woodhead and onto 155, 35 miles an hour is like probably hitting on 80 on 101 in that neighborhood. It's just a bit excessive. We have lots of young families in there with lots of grade school age kids that like to play. It's a beautiful time of year. They're getting out. We have a lot of dog walkers. There are a lot of folks that come from other parts of the town. They come in there and run the one mile, 1.1 mile. They walk, and they recreate. We have a lot of wildlife. As the regional director for the National Wild Turkey Federation, I'm very proud when I see all the wild turkeys in the neighborhood, the herd of deer we boast, and even a bear this year. So, what the crux of it is, is I'd like to see, I'm not trying to stir the pot here. I know this can be a contentious issue with speed limits, as I understand it. I'm just looking for a common sense solution here, and the idea of safety for the neighborhood's residents, especially the kids, because it would be devastating if anything happened to them. I'm sure the police here can tell you it's a low-traffic area. That is true. But we do, I do work out of the home, at my home, so I do see what traffic there is in home most days. And a lot of the high rate of speed comes from delivery services, UPS, FedEx, et cetera. But we do have some folks in the neighborhood that, for whatever reason, they hit that west side straightaway, and they turn into Mario Andretti and want to see how fast they can get it up to. I'm not sure why. But it's unnecessary. Again, it's 1.1 miles. I tend to keep it at least 15, 20 tops, and I can get out of that neighborhood in about 45 seconds. So, I don't think anyone really needs to be in a rush to go anywhere fast. I'm not sure beyond this what entails getting this done, but in my request, I've asked for at least two postings in the neighborhood, especially right by the bus stop, which is right there by Woodhead, in the little circle there. Many times I've been out there. I know Mr. Downey's out there with his children, and waiting for the bus people coming in and exiting the neighborhood at unreasonable amounts of speed, and there's kids out there, you know, for whatever reason, the kids like to follow balls. But there's a lot of cars stacked up right there, you know, as they're waiting for the bus, parents and guardians, so it prevents a hazard there. There's a visual impairment, people coming up, leaving, or coming in, aren't seeing the kids. I just, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I don't want to see cats or dogs or turkeys get run over. So, that's where I'm at on it. I don't know what you need. But it's unnecessary. Again, it's 1.1 miles. I tend to keep it at least fifteen, twenty tops, and I can get out of that neighborhood in about forty-five seconds. So I don't think anyone really needs to be in a rush to go anywhere fast. I'm not sure beyond this what entails getting this done, but in my request, I've asked for at least two postings in the neighborhood, especially right by the bus stop, which is right there by Woodhead and the little circle there. Many times I've been out there. I know Mr. Downey's out there with his children and waiting for the bus people coming in and exiting the neighborhood at unreasonable amounts of speed. And there's kids out there, you know, for whatever reason, the kids like to follow balls. But there's a lot of cars stacked up right there, you know, as they're waiting for the bus, parents and guardians, so it prevents a hazard there. There's a visual impairment. People coming up, leaving, or coming in aren't seeing the kids. I just, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I don't want to see cats or dogs or turkeys get run over. So, that's where I'm at on it. I don't know what you need from me or what I can do to help the case.
Chief, do you have any comment?
No. You? The lowest speed limit you could drop that to is twenty-five. I think that's a good speed for that street. I hear what you're saying about the street not being posted. Sometimes you are better off not having the street posted. Because people will drive at a reasonable speed, which might be ten miles on, miles per hour under what that road actually is designated for. I can do a traffic survey out there. We have the means to do that. We can get a count on traffic, times of traffic, average speeds, things like that. I suggest that we do that. And then, I don't know if that would suffice for the surveys that the state. I'm, we're getting mixed. I'm getting, I'm being told that we don't need to do a survey on the town road, that the town can, the select board can adopt it ordinance. But Julie's gotten different information, so we need to pin that down. But we can start by using the equipment that we have to do a survey out there. Once we establish a speed limit, if we can get it dropped to twenty-five, that's next to impossible to design that road for us to be able to enforce it because it's almost every, it's an angle all around, so maybe that will never work. But we post it out there. God forbid something does happen. Actually, reconstruction team can come out and be able to tell if they're in excess of the speed limit. So that'd be my suggestion. We get out there and we do a couple of surveys.
Okay. I'm wondering if the sign that said, "Children at Play Go Slow" or something like that.
There is one of his beginnings there.
Better serve.
There's one there. It blends right into the white pines that are there. It's a yellow sign. It's kind of fades into the background.
I would also say, I've lived in James Farm for, since nineteen seventy-nine.
Oh, absolutely.
Hi, my name is Ed Downey. I've lived in James Farm since nineteen seventy-nine, off and on, you know, but now I'm back there. All the corners are impossible to see around. I have a set, I have an eight-year-old son. He loves to ride his bike around the neighborhood. He loves to go through Woodhead to get to live in, uh, live and learn when he goes there for Rising Hawk. All my kids have ridden their bikes in there. We encourage them to go out, get exercise. It's a beautiful time of the year. But to be honest, you can't see around any of the corners in the neighborhood. And I live on a fairly flat, straight area. And I can tell you, people come around the corner and go all Mario Andretti and fly by my house. I can, I work from home quite a bit, so I can hear the cars going by quite quickly during the day. And I walk my dogs. I let my dogs run, so. My wife and I have made an effort to stay at twenty-five. We don't feel like that's unreasonable at all for that neighborhood. With the amount of kids now in there, as opposed to when we first bought back in two thousand thirteen, it's, it's almost tripled the amount of young kids who are in that neighborhood, so. I agree with Fred and Mr. Bird. It, the, the, the speed limit needs to be, you know, as low as we can get it.
Yes, can I ask you a question, please? And I'm not sure if this is the proper place, but maybe you can address it. What about speed limits? Now, slow them down?
Well, you might, you might be okay because Randy's retiring soon.
Oh.
Those slowers make it next to impossible to plow. Yeah, just a problem there. Not, not meaning to downplay what you're saying, but I, I've been enforcing the speed limits in this town for a long time and the smaller the neighborhood and when you get into a configuration role like you have, cars appear to be going a lot faster than they, they are actually going. And I, and I know this for a fact, because typically what we'll do is we'll go out and we've had some people who are fond of determining that cars are doing fifty-plus miles an hour. And we'll go out and we'll sit in the cruiser and say, okay, when the car's coming, you tell us how fast you think they're going. We hit the radar and people are absolutely amazed at how slow the cars are actually going. But it's because of the road, the way the road's designed. I did go out there today. I drove the road once at thirty-five and hit some of those corners. It's next to impossible to go around those corners at thirty-five. So, and that's when I went to twenty-five. Twenty-five seemed like a good speed. It was safe to go around the corner. Again, I think, let me get out there. Let us do a couple of traffic surveys. And, you know, if you, I'll read it up, reach out to you, the two of you. If you want to come in and take a look at them, I'll go over them with you. And we'll see if we can come up with a plan.
Can you tell us what that entails? What's a traffic survey? Is that with the little radar trailer or?
Uh, no, I, I don't. This is, uh, we call it a stealth stat for a reason. We don't tell anybody when it goes out where we put it. We do it in the middle of the night. Because what will happen is somebody will say, well, if I drive by at sixty miles an hour, I gotta think people are speeding on you. So, we, we, we put it out there. Nobody knows when we do it.
So it's just anything across the road? It's just something that's, that, like you break the beam and it says?
It's a, it's a, it's a remote radar device. I went, I did most of the roads in town to help Randy with his plowing. So we knew when the most traffic, what time of day it was, so he knew, okay, I should hit this road at five o'clock in the morning because there's more traffic there than there is over here. So, more than happy to put that out within the next couple of weeks at some point. And when we have the results, I'll, I'll get back with you. We have put the radar trailer out there, but that, actually, the small radar trailer, but when I put that out, we have to put this feeling the sign on it. So that kind of defeats the purpose because I'll be like, oh, Jesus, it's thirty-five up here. So let's start with that and we'll go from there.
I, I guess my question is, and maybe this is a for you, chief, but.
Please.
You know, sorry, I'm sorry.
It's, James Farm is designated as a rural area. I think we can agree it's not rural. And I guess in my mind's eye of what rural is, Lee Book Road says rural. James Farm Road is not. It is more of an urban combat. And, uh, do you agree or disagree with that assessment?
And, I mean, if you look at, I talked to the state's engineers today and, and they have a formula that they use and, and that's how they designate it. I guess you, it's, anything can be challenged. So I'm not sure who at what point in history said that that's rural. So it could very well be. So, you know, let's get a survey done. We'll see what the actual speeds are of people traveling out there. And then we can always, you know, I can talk to Rob Shutt over at Route Six. He's one of the engineers. He's a good guy, always willing to help. Maybe he can, you know, help us figure out, should that be rural, should it be urban? And then, once we have all our information, then we can go from there. Then if the board adopts a twenty-five mile an hour policy, because I have to be able to enforce it. So you just can't randomly say, okay, twenty-five, and then I go charge somebody and we go to court and they're like, well. So we have all our ducks in a row and we do this the right way. And, and because, and my feeling is, if we go in that direction, there are other neighborhoods that, once we do yours, other residents are gonna come in, well, hey, how about mine? So before we do just one, we should open it up, have a public meeting or something where people can come in. And then we look at all the roads. We adopt one policy, one ordinance, it covers them all.
Again, I'm not here to start trouble. But I see the way this can cascade. As someone that is prior to law enforcement, I understand what the chief is saying. I appreciate, uh, if you're not radar certified, you think things go faster than they are, so I know what he's saying. And I, I agree wholeheartedly, but there are definitely some, uh, some violators in there. So the sooner we can get this and my kids are safe, thumbs up. Thank you all very much for your time.
I have a handheld radar if you wanna.
Okay.
Want me to give it to you tonight?
Go back and try it out.
Seriously, it's a handheld battery-operated radar unit.
You want me to stand out there?
Yeah, we could do that.
You sit out there in the lawn chair and just, and discreetly just.
I'll take you up.
Chief, I have a question.
Yep.
Do we have other towns that have reduced speed limits that are on rural roads?
Uh, the town of Nottingham did this. I talked to Gunnar Foss today, the chief over there. I have a copy of their ordinance. They just did it. They didn't have any speed limits. So their chief drove around with one of the selectmen and said, yeah, you know what? I, I think this is a good speed. This is a good speed. And what the selectmen just did, they said, you know what? We're just gonna make it twenty-five everywhere. And in talking to the chief today, he's like, we've got roads that, it should be quicker than twenty-five here. But it is twenty-five. They have an ordinance. I don't know if anybody's spotted. They did it because they were having people fight it because it wasn't posted. You know, we have what's called prima facie laws. So the speed limit sign, seeing the speed limit sign is prima facie evidence. So if it says twenty-five and somebody's doing forty-five, that speed limit sign is prima facie evidence that they were speeding in that area. You go down south, their speed limits are absolute. If it says seventy, you're then up here doing seventy-one. They can write you. We still have to prove that it's unsafe for the conditions existing. So, type of neighborhood, time of day, weather, things like that.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yeah, it sounds as if the direction we're heading in is, the chief and you and I'll just work together. He's gonna do his traffic survey. I just again want to point out that the statute reads that we can only make a change on the basis of an engineering or traffic investigation, so.
So that's what the survey would be, would it not?
We can try.
Okay, so I'd like to enter a motion. Move to authorize the town administrator to pursue the method by which select board may reduce the speed limit on James Farm Road. So this would kind of give a working relationship between her and the chief to, to look at the traffic survey or, or any other way.
We would still have to come back to the board to have the speed limit reduced.
Yeah, and the word says may at this point. So it gives us a leeway at this point for the chief to work something out. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No votes favor?
Aye.
My motion passes.
I, I see that a number of people are here, I think, to, to, for the Bedrock Gardens item, so we can, we can move that up. The board may recall that in a previous meeting on June eighteenth, you were acting on a request from Bedrock Gardens to allow them to have some activity for the month of June and I, for the month of July. The problem was, the problem is, as I see it, that even though I think we all thought we were there that night to talk about the month of July, the motion that was made and passed didn't really say the month of July for private tours. So Bedrock Gardens scheduled and held a number, I don't know how many. It was a few. It wasn't a lot, of private tours the last week of June. When Ms. Rossi was made aware of that, she made me aware of it, who contacted our attorney, who contacted their attorney. And so ultimately, they took down the advertised tours on their website. And so I think that by June twenty-ninth, there wasn't any activity there. And so now we're in the month of July, so we would be moving forward with what the board voted on at the June eighteen meeting. But this also brought up the question for Ms. Rossi and myself, that going forward, should there be any activity at Bedrock Gardens that was not approved by the select board? Is the select board willing to grant the authority to the planning and zoning administrator to, I suppose, issue a cease and desist to Bedrock Gardens, which was contained within the motion? You may recall that failure to abide by the above conditions shall result in revocation of approval, rather than having to come to another board meeting or schedule a special board meeting in order to be able to do that.
So what you're telling us is that Bedrock Gardens at this time is bound for July and on until they deal with the planning board?
Just July.
Just July at this point?
Just July.
And then August?
Uh, the meeting in June, what was discussed was, let's see how July goes.
When do they meet with the planning board?
On twenty-sixth. Thursday, July the twenty-sixth.
What's your opinion, Miss?
I just have one question. And it could be, it could be just a typo or wrong information. I was made aware of the event. Contact, contact was made at ten forty-six AM on six twenty-seventh. And this is, this is a question actually for Bob Carey. So our attorney contacted Bob Carey. We contacted, I contacted our attorney at ten forty-six on six twenty-seventh. Our attorney said, and this is all email. I have an email train, that she contacted Bob Carey and Bob Carey said that he would contact Bedrock Gardens. And then according to his email, they had an event the next day, even after contact was made, since they weren't supposed to. Is that a typo?
So let me, sure, Bob Carey. I can get you all before. Yes, when Laura Specter-Morgan contacted me on, it was Wednesday the twenty-seventh. I was in an all-day mediation. I had to get back to the office at six-thirty. I looked at it the next morning and I told Bedrock Gardens in the afternoon, no more. So on the twenty-eighth, they took down the postings for the, the, on their website. On the twenty-ninth, nobody came by. On the thirtieth, they turned people away. And so I acted as promptly as my schedule allowed me to act. And in my response to Karen, I, I know Ms. Livermore identified the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. The twenty-sixth was volunteers. It wasn't a tour. The twenty-seventh, they had four people there. And the twenty-eighth, they had sixteen people. So we tried to, we really didn't, we, it was my, my misinterpretation of what passed and, and when we were here and three weeks ago, or at the other building three weeks ago. We certainly didn't want to create any issues and I think we tried to act as promptly as we could. And I agree with Ms. Glover. I think July, I think we all, we're all set for July and we're in July, and then we'll see what happens in August. And maybe that's the planning board that, that has authority to tell us, go forward with the same program in, in August.
Yeah, I just, I just have an issue with them being told on the twenty-seventh, no more, and then they did again on the twenty-eighth. That's all. I, cause I just, I mean, I understand, but I just, I'm the person who hears from everybody. So and they keep, the neighbors say to me, and they're right, why do they keep getting another chance after another chance after another chance? Because they had an event back in May when they weren't supposed to, when we never got an explanation. It just happened. Do you remember that?
I do, and I think that was something that we discussed with Laura Specter-Morgan. I met with her over coffee and talked about it. And then we decided the best way to approach would be to come up with this board and say, okay, here's what we want to do while everything is pending, seeing how that we are in agritourism use and other agritourism uses are allowed to continue, other applications are pending. So we, we hoped we'd worked it out. We'd worked it out. I certainly didn't want to be back here calling my sword that, for misinterpreting what this board told us to do.
We didn't want to be back here either.
And I feel, I am sorry for Karen too, because she's, she's the one who takes the calls. And so I think we have it understanding now and have it cleared up. And we certainly don't want to, you know, if I thought it was gonna jeopardize anything just a week before we got into July, I certainly never would have given the green light on my thing down on the website.
So I guess my opinion at this point is, since we have July all set, we're going July moving forward. I do agree with the town administrator that we probably should go ahead and let Karen make the decision, so we won't have to come frankly upon the board overtime. Which means if the other select people agree with me, that, that would give power and authority to Ms. Rossi to go ahead and make the decision if there's another violation.
And I think we'll, to be safer and to make Ms. Rossi's job easy too, we'll give her the, the website schedule so we can both go, okay.
Okay.
This fits. This is the Tuesday through Friday private tours. Here's the one open day. Here are the hours, and so that we're not making anybody's job difficult.
Yeah, you know, I think that's, and one of the problems we have is just kind of a lack of credibility on what events are gonna take place, when they're gonna take place, and holding to a schedule. And that's really important. And I, you know, I think it's, it's, it's. I would, I would have to ask them, ask Bedrock Gardens personally, hold to the schedule. Publish it, get approval for it, and hold to it. Don't slip anything in, because that's just, it just keeps stirring the pot. That's what it does. And we, we just can't come to an end of this thing till we have, you know, just solid credibility. I hear us. We agree to a schedule. We agree to methods. And, and you hold to it. Yes, please?
You have to come up here.
Yes, please.
Hi, Jill Nene, forty-five, Highway Road. I think one, one thing that creates ambiguity is that we have people who sign up, or at least we want to, they're not full, sign up. least we want to, they're not full, sign up for the two tour times in a day. But we also have master gardeners who are getting trained, we have weeders that come routinely, and there can be as many as six cars. We have volunteer woodsmen that comes every week. So the parking lot can look, it doesn't reflect the four people who've signed up for the tour. So that, that makes the credibility mushy. So how should we handle that?
Well, in this case, like, your schedule was published on your website, so there was no denying that.
Absolutely.
And your weeders, they don't get published on the schedule, so that's not really a, I don't perceive that's a problem.
But if you look at the parking lots, we could have four visitors for a tour, and we could have 12 farm workers.
Right, and I think we can deal with that on an individual basis. I don't think that I'm being unreasonable.
No.
That's what Ms. Livermore saw was volunteers, which is not a tour, but she sees cars and she calls Karen. And so that's not a, that wasn't a violation of any schedule at all, it's just people who are working in the gardens.
I understand.
And then we did have another issue over the weekend that I just need to bring up. They did turn people away on Saturday, and one of the couples that they turned away, and it's my understanding they'll address this, moved their picnic to the Grumblings field. So when Mr. Grumbling, who is significant other, came up, there was people picnicking in her back field. Which was, it's a beautiful view, but that can't happen.
And I think the sequence was, Mr. Munger can talk to it, I think the sequence was, they went to Grumbling first, got kicked out of Grumbling, and came over to Bedrock Gardens second.
That I don't know.
So I think they were, they trespass twice. But, yeah.
Bob Munger, 45 I wrote, he summarized it. The entrances to the parking lot were totally blocked, one was with a tractor with its bucket and arm extended, the other was with a sow horse and no trespassing sign. A couple came in with a backpack, they started to walk determinately past me when I was in the parking area, like I wasn't there. I said, what's going on? They said, we were just at a farm where we couldn't get what we wanted. And I said, could you please leave? And they did. I think they were the same couple that had the picnic. We certainly had, we can account for everybody on our property all day Saturday, and there were no people on our property that we know of that had a chance to go from our property to the Grumblings to picnic.
All right, sir.
Thank you.
One more question then.
Sure.
So if volunteers come, do they come on a regular basis? Are these people that do all these things, do you know in advance, or do they show up to weed the gardens over here?
We have a regular program that we call Hands in Dirt. They are every other Tuesday. We have a friend who comes every, sometimes Tuesday, sometimes Thursday, to help in the woods.
The Shaw.
We have other volunteers and meetings that come on. We have board meetings.
If you could just forward some of those to Karen, that would, then people call up, and she will be able to say it's a board meeting, or it's pickers, or it's...
Weeders.
Weeders and woodsmen. And then I think that would reduce a lot of issues. So as much as that's good, you provide, it would be helpful.
Right, exactly. That's what I was saying. Excellent.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's a good suggestion.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know, just as long as we've recorded the minutes that the board agreed to give Ms. Rossi the authority to issue a cease and desist, any activities, provable activities take place outside of the approved schedule.
And for her to let us know.
Well, yes.
Oh, and I'm usually, I am very good at communicating with Ms. Glover and Laura Specter-Morgan.
We hope that the phone call that ever gets made, so.
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For that, just a couple of lists, okay.
Thank you for taking us out, board.
You may recall that we discussed in a previous meeting, the subject of communicating with the residents, how the residents are going to know what's going on, and it just continues to bedevil us as it does many, many other communities. So one of the things I looked into was what the process would be for putting any kind of notice newsletters, information into the tax bill. And under RSA 7611, we can, however, a governing body has to vote to mail other town or city information directly related to municipal business along with the tax bill. Under no circumstances shall a city or town mail statements of position on matters of public policy along with the tax bill. I gotta be honest, I'm not exactly certain what that means. I think it's similar to the, you know, we're not, we have to be very careful in offering the board's opinion on things as opposed to just information. I think if we're going to talk about doing this, it's going to require some coordination, because I don't think that we want to put a whole lot of information in the tax bill, if for no other reason than we certainly don't want to increase too greatly the cost to mail the tax bills. To be honest, I haven't even had a chance to talk to the tax collector yet. I mean, I read the statute to me that if you vote to do it, we do it, but I just haven't had an opportunity to talk to her. And I think that if we do do this, it's going to require coordination, as I said, with the departments, if it's information about town departments that we're going to put in there, or committees and commissions, because it seems to me, if we are going to go to the trouble of doing this, it's to prospectively let the citizens know some event in the future.
Is there another, Julie, is there another way, some kind of bulk mailing rate or something, if we put something together?
There are, I mean, I don't know specifically what the rules are, but we can certainly look into bulk mail. I know you have to get, or at least you used to have to get a bulk mail permit. There might have been some cause to that, I don't think it's huge. Actually, I don't know, I shouldn't say that.
You can get a printer to do it for you, if they have the permit.
Yeah.
But like a mailing charter to all residents, not individuals, just a bulk mail.
Just resident ad.
Yeah, it's around $900, something like that. Depends also in terms of what you're sending. And I think the town administrator and I have talked about this, if we had like a one-page thing, and the thing that, I don't know how you brought up, but I was thinking, the town center project. Get the information out there. I think that started with you having your notary done with those couple that are in that subdivision that had no clue.
Right.
And they're, so it'd be something like that. So maybe getting information, and the other thing, we had a conversation about it, it would be the same thing we put in the voters' guide. It would be position, vote for it, vote against it. It would be, this is what we're working on, this is what the project is at the particular time zone. And we could put other things in it.
Well, I think, I think, you know, there's a lot happening with the town senate committee, and now we have the church transaction going on. I think people need to know about that, et cetera, et cetera. I think there's a lot to say, honestly, so.
Do you happen to know what the TCVC schedule is relative to the process with the architect? In other words, I'm just trying to think of the timing of the tax bills. So the next tax bill goes out the end of October.
October, yes. So we'll have something?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how finalized it would be, but if anything, just to raise people's awareness that this is happening?
Right.
Because that's part of the schedule, people have no...
Right. Well, not only this is happening, but perhaps, again, depending on what the timing is, these are the public information sessions for the TCVC, and that's yet another way to try to get that out, so that hopefully we can get more than 40 people, not that we don't appreciate the 40 people that came.
It's the same thing, yes. So this would be more raising awareness, they could go to the website to find out, or they could, you know, there's a Facebook page for it as well. So anything that we can do to raise awareness, because it's not vote for this, vote against this, it's, this is what we're proposing.
Right.
If you have questions or, you know, clarification, but just to get exposure out there, that people know that this is happening, so that they don't walk into the voting booth and march and say, hmm, first I've heard of this.
All right, so perhaps as we get closer to October, maybe we can put something together, work with the TCVC and the commissions to see what information. I think we need to keep it, I think we need to keep it to one page.
Sure.
Two-sided, one-page?
Two-sided, one-page.
And check with the town clerk, see, because she might say, hell no, I'm not, because we could help her, I don't know what the procedure is for that, but...
Yeah, I think that this is when we get the folding machine.
That's correct, you get a folding machine.
Okay, so as we get closer to October, we'll continue to work on it, put something together, get the vote from the board, if we need any vote from the board in order to put it in the tax bill, we'll go.
Okay.
All right. As you saw, speaking of moving forward, as you saw in the agenda packet, the church has signed the purchase and sales agreement. So the board wants to approve that tonight, we can get it signed, and fix that for the first, so...
The other thing that, and I don't know if you can explore this, I don't know how, but since that line is close to that building, when that building is taken down, we're going to need something from them that says it's okay for us if we encroach upon their property to remove it.
Yeah.
So...
If we want something more formalized, we could get a, what's called a temporary construction easement.
All right.
We would execute with the church.
Okay, just so, if you can, I don't know, you've got Mr. Barkers, Bankers, just say that that's something that we'd like to explore with them.
Yeah.
Because I'd hate for them, and I don't think this is where they would happen, but you know, stuff happens, but I'd rather cross our teeth and dark our eyes than...
Absolutely.
Because the next degree goes in there and tears up their lawn, I suspect that we would just, you know, make it whole, but maybe they say, oh, you damaged our property.
Right, well, there's really no way to put that line between the parish house...
I know.
And the well. I mean, that's where the line has to go in order to satisfy the requirements.
I think what's, I think we understand the line, it's just granting permission to allow us to infringe on the property.
Crossfall.
Yeah, we'll drive on it, we'll put it plainly. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, let's make sure we get coverage on that, otherwise I fight with the agreement.
Okay.
Okay, so I'd like to enter a motion, move to approve the purchase and sales agreement for the lead church property located in tax map 11-6-0. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So the next step of the process, do we bring some, after the survey and stuff is done, do we have to bring something in front of the planning?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we don't have to.
Yeah, I don't, we will.
But we will.
You want to set the precedence.
So can we, so can we use Ms. Rossi for that, or how does that work?
I would imagine so.
Sure. So can you direct her to do what she needs to do to start that process?
Yeah.
After, of course, we have the survey, because we don't have the top on the let one yet, but...
All right. Ms. Rossi did communicate your most recent comments to the surveyor.
Oh, okay.
So he's going to look at that.
Okay. Yes, well, should we tell the rest of the board? Do you want to know?
There was just some question relative to the size of the building, the parish house, as it was indicated on the draft survey plan. So the surveyor's just going to go back and check measurements.
Was it bigger or smaller?
It's bigger.
Bigger.
The other thing was the rear setback is incorrect. It's supposed to be 25, and he says 35, so, those are the only two things.
Okay.
Thompson Mill Road.
Yes.
Piece of property across from the town-owned property on Thompson Mill Road has been purchased, and there's a house being built. I don't know if any of you have been by and seen it. So in order to bring power to that house, New Hampshire Electric Utility tells us that they need to place a new pole beside Thompson Mill Road and run the power. There's a current ease, power easement running through that property, running through the woods. I don't know why they were ever, it's been there one time. And then, so it has to run from the existing utilities, which is already on our property, out to the new pole, and then across the street. I did advise Ms. Rossi, Randy Stevens of this, the Heritage Commission, the Conservation Commission. I think the Conservation Commission is okay with it. They expressed some concerns about the stones, and I believe Mr. Budby can talk further about, or the Heritage Commission, or Ms. Jenkins can talk about, the Heritage Commission's position on the stones. The stone wall is considered a historic artifact. Patricia Jenkins, the Heritage Commission? Yes, the Heritage Commission did go out and look at the site. They have marked both the pole and the tie for it, right behind the beginning of the stone wall. That is, that is different than other stone walls, partly because of the size of it and the way it's built. It's unfortunate that it's in that spot. We would like to see the pole moved, it would be east, I believe. There is, there is a picture. We would like to see it moved so that it does not encroach on that stone wall. It just so happens that it's at the end of it, looks like it would be very easy to move. We don't know why they put it there. But we do request that it be at least looked at and had it moved.
May I ask a question? It wasn't directionally challenged. If you're standing with your back to the new house, and so you're looking at the stone wall, so you want it to move to the left or to the right?
To the left.
To the left. Because there's an opening, right?
There is quite a large opening, and there are...
We have a picture, so you can take the picture and tell them.
Okay.
There are a number of trees that have been marked for removal in that area anyway.
Well, because they need a 30-foot wide easement, and that would be permanent.
Right, and so if they, if they put their pole in that 30-foot wide easement, it would make, it would make that more safe as far as that wall is concerned.
Well, that will shift the 30-foot easement. I mean, the 30-foot easement is 15 feet on either side of the direct line between where the new pole is and where it connects to the existing wall.
There's a very nice opening right there, which is approximately 30 feet, but if you move the pole to the center of that opening...
Right.
Two things would happen. One, you wouldn't be disturbing the rock wall, because they're going to get heavy equipment in there, they're going to do something to it. The second thing is, there's some very nice oak trees that are on that side, but there's some scrubby pines, little ones, that can easily be taken out. So I would suggest that we have them move it to the center of that opening. I think it would still work, not the name of electrical engineer, or whatever they call them, but I think they could still hit their points, because it's almost directly across from the driveway, so they should be able to get a clear path to going there, so.
You make sure that the guy wires in the stake is not over the wall, which we should get to this wall.
So rather than vote on this tonight, even with that caveat, I can, would you prefer that I communicate with them, and then they say yea or nay, and then we go from there? I don't know that I'm comfortable just saying to them, yeah, okay, go ahead, just move it a little to the left, without us then seeing again where they're going to relocate to.
Yeah, have them go out and move the stake?
Yeah.
Do you have a res... They've obviously been out there, so the idea would be to put it in the middle of that natural opening that's already there with no stone wall?
Yeah.
And it looks like, they could probably do that, but I'm not an expert. So just have them do it, move it, let us know when it's done, so we can take a quick look at it.
Okay, I will communicate that to them. Don't necessarily, or don't need to take action tonight, but the next item is just as it is every two years in the NHMA legislative policy process, so this is just to get you started, familiar with what they're looking at. So we'll bring this back at some point in the meeting, but...
Well, you'll have to meet, if there's any floor policies, you have to sell that.
Right, so the floor log is tent.
Well, we wanted to do a floor policy, but we need to know what the floor policies are to vote on those, so sometime in the end of the part of August when we get those in. Because the meeting isn't until the second week in September, so...
September 14th.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so... Because whoever gets the vote, he needs some direction in terms of those floor policy that you presented.
Thank you, I just need a board signature on the deed for one hundred ninety room.
Thank you for volunteering. Uh-oh, we're losing our full audience except for Mr. Tappin.
I want to know what happens to that camera. It's going down. It's coming down.
It's gonna be firewood.
Scott, how do we identify historic markers? I mean, do we have a, who would know that wall is a historic marker?
Well, in terms of being historic, Heritage Commission, Historical Society, we probably know that. If you take a drive, you'll see that it's very, very different. That these stones are massive stones.
Okay, my point is only, we have things around that are historical.
Yep. Well, usually there's a town historian, we don't have one, ours passed away. We're trying to get a employee that is retiring to take on that job, but he is resisting the procedure. So a historian would do that, but any people that in town that have knowledge about it can let you know, so...
Yeah, but part of that, shouldn't we, shouldn't we identify them somehow, at the, at the site? That it's a historic marker?
Well, we've got historic markers out, I think there's ten of them?
Ten of them.
Ten of them.
Yes, I understand, which, I also have a question about that. It seems you don't really know what they are. You know that there's one around somewhere, but you really don't know. I assume there's a map that keys those markers to, there is a map, it's on the website?
Yep.
Okay.
It's ten of them.
But as people drive around, you see a sign on the side of the road that says historic marker number ten, but you don't know where it is.
If you go to the website, you can print out the thing that tells you what each of the markers are and approximate location of where they are?
I just wonder if we shouldn't identify them somehow, that's the one.
Well, you've got the sign, but...
Oh, but the sign's not necessarily near the marker.
The sign is the marker, because they're in the shape of the town of Lake. Is it signed by the road?
No, I mean, I'm sorry, it's not by the...
Oh, the thing.
The thing.
Most of them are closed.
They're closed, but not right on.
Like the one for Carlin Road is at the beginning and end of the road, it's not on the road all the way.
Exactly.
But, you know, the thing is, you look at the map and go see the thing. I finally went to see the last one.
I mean, somebody could take those rocks to build their, to build their...
It's gonna happen to the fireplace with.
That would be, that would be against the law, because the town, it's on town property.
Yeah, true.
That you can't do.
Plus, they do...
No, you can't do it, I'm just saying, it's not identified as a historical marker. If we identify something as a historical marker, we should put something there that says historical marker.
It's not a historical site, per se. It's not the site of some historical event, at least not one that's been identified. It's just that stone walls, not only in the state of New Hampshire, New England, New York, are considered to be important. And so certain legislation was enacted in order to protect the stone walls.
I agree, so we should put a sign next to it that says it's a historical...
Well, there's a lot of stone holes in them. But we'd be doing that near every single stone wall.
No, not necessarily.
They could have sewed hole in a stone wall.
Huh?
They have a sewed hole in a stone wall. Lucky God, look at them. Yeah, I traced it back to seventeen twenty, so I know I got one there. All right, where are we?
Don't wanna mark them, don't mark them.
We are on F.
Thank you, keeping us straight in there.
Highway Supervisor Position. So to address the opinion of one, that the advertisement for the position wasn't exciting enough, I worked with Mr. Stevens and revised it. I don't know that it's exciting, but we revised it a bit. So really, though, my question for the board is, I'm assuming we're gonna advertise this again, because we certainly have not been deluged with applications, what the board's opinion or thought is about the expected annual salary, in terms of advertising it?
Well, you've got that, well, can we put a dollar sign in front of the sixty-eight?
Yeah.
Sixty-eight to seventy-two thousand. I'd open the range a little bit more than that.
Okay.
But that's just me. I like it, it's better than the previous one. I'm not holding my breath to see who applies, but that's another thing we should discuss out here, is, you know, what's our fallback position? Nottingham's been looking for seven months, they haven't found anyway. So what's your, what's our, we can't find anybody, what are we gonna do, position? One of the things that Town Administrator talked about, Matbury has a road agent, but then they hire out to a third party to do stuff. I don't know if we're at that particular position, but we need to kind of come up with a Plan B, if you will. So according to Mr. Stevens, we're not in crunch time, but just as soon as we get into the fall, that's when things start for them. So we can probably lip along for the next, you know, couple of months, maybe. But at some point, rubber's gonna hit the road, and we need to have somebody that can perform those tasks, so...
Are the third parties around too?
Well, I mean, other towns do everything with contractors.
Matbury's, is A.J. Hartford, he lives in town, so...
Camden Falls contracts out everything, I think Auburn contracts out everything.
Well, we were talking about that anyways, you know, contracting out, cutting the grass and that type of stuff. I think we did that before, right? We contracted out, then we pulled it in?
Then a little bit, yes.
But that's not really where I think most of the heartburn is relative to taking the job. I mean, it's a...
Oh, I realize that.
Yes, we can offload, we can offload some of the, I'll call it more menial tasks to do that are fairly easy to find somebody to cut grass, et cetera. But there's no doubt we're facing a heck of a hill trying to get somebody to take this, take this job. Is it...
Are we not receptive, are we receptive of fact that maybe we should talk about a Public Works Directive that runs over maybe three departments or two?
Well, it would take care of your management, but who's gonna do the foreman job? That would basically what Randy, Randy kind of is the person plus the supervisor.
Well, so working lead person, working foreman, if you want to call it that.
That would take care of the administrator tasks, but then you still need somebody to do the actual stuff. So, and I think part of the problem is, you know, not to delve into what we just dealt with in terms of a candidate, but it's a very demanding job. And it's seven by twenty-four, it's not, you know, eight to five or seven to three. It's, you know, a tree's down an X lane. Oh, jeez, I'm at home watching a show, I'll just wait till tomorrow. You know, you can't do that. You gotta go out and you gotta deal with it, because it's restricted in a public way. And the same thing with snow, you know? It's snowing, wow, jeez, I don't wanna get up at two AM, I'll just wait till seven o'clock. And you can't do that either. So it's a very demanding job, and you need to find the right kind of individual to do it. And we've had the right kind of individual for many years, and we've, you know, been very, very lucky. And now that person is, you know, retiring, so what do we do? Well, I don't have the answer, I don't have...
No, I don't understand, but that's, you know, it's a conversation we have to have. I mean, look, there's only so many ways you can incentivize this job, that's a fact. You're either, certainly the title is part of it, certainly the compensation is also part of it. And maybe even with the title and the compensation, you still have to change the organization a little bit and have somebody who's a head groundskeeper that takes care of cemeteries and this and that, and... You know, somebody who's a head mechanic, I mean, I don't know.
It's like one person's been doing two jobs for a long time.
His whole family, I mean, she's beyond that, so...
Well, maybe what we should do at this time is ask the Town Administrator to look in the fact that if we were to outsource some of this work, let's start identifying possible firms in case we really get caught behind the eight ball. One of them obviously is snow plowing type activities. Someone who would coordinate snow plowing and work with the existing staff that we have that are on call, and maybe augment that. So, not that we're gonna immediately hire these people, but at least have a contact out there and maybe a rough estimate or a proposal. I think that's all we can do at this point until we re-advertise it and move forward. I don't know if there's other, besides grass cutting and snow plowing, I'm not sure what else could be outsourced.
You do notice when you drive around some landscaping companies that have several trucks, bigger trucks, not pickup trucks, bigger trucks, that, sitting right next to them are plows that they obviously use, they obviously use in the wintertime, that maybe you could get a couple of those to go on contract for the season. And, and, because they know the territory, et cetera, and, I mean, I don't...
It's a temporary solution, but I think the only solution we have at this time, that will divert an existing staff that would slip behind, at this point, too. We can identify somebody else. And I think we need to think, I think it was just mentioned that maybe we're gonna have to augment the highway department with another worker besides what we have already. But that's down the road at this point.
You got one? Hmm? You got one? Not one this, I retire next week, so...
Well, we can't really do that.
Yeah, I know, I know, but you know, it always helps. So can we authorize the Town Administrator to place this ad again out there?
Yep, and do we want to change the salary range, leave it as it is?
What's your range you're talking about?
I would like to change it to something, because right now it's a four thousand dollar difference.
Spread it, yeah.
Spread it a little bit more, like sixty to seventy-five, something like that.
Yeah.
Yes. You gotta hit that seventy-five number anyway, I think, to make it, just to get their attention.
And then the other, you know, what we did the last time was, you know, we put it in NHMA, we put it in Foster's, I forget, what was that, like three hundred and something dollars? Running things in the newspapers, not inexpensive, and then it ran online, Seacost Online. I think we put it in Indeed, and I think you do have the free, the free, the freeway of doing it now, we might have to pay hundreds of dollars, so...
I think we need to buy the bullet, pay the fee.
Yeah.
I would like to see us put it in the Uni Leader too.
Okay.
The Sunday Edition, though. And I think in terms of all these particular publications, if you hit the Sunday Edition, I know it's a little bit more expensive, but more people would read it.
In fact, some people just buy the Sunday Edition.
It was in the Foster's Sunday, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't know. But I think both of those, if we hit the Uni Leader and Foster's and put it in the Sunday Edition, it just, I know it's kind of expensive, but Uni Leader, it'll hit all those places that are just to the west of us.
Right, what about the Concord one?
You could do that one too.
I think we need to buy it.
I think we're at the point that we need to open up our...
We sure do, absolutely.
What's your arrangement, anything in arrangement?
I don't think they have a publication on that one, I don't know. And of course, NHMA, their website. And I don't know, in terms of one of those, if you want to do Indeed, or try one of the other ones, try Monster, one of those.
Well, Indeed, let us do it for free.
For Monster, I don't know if they're...
Thirty days. Monster, Career Builder, we're looking at four, five hundred dollars to get in there.
And how much is the Indeed one? Because people who come for jobs, they look at all of them.
But it's, I don't think it's gonna be free anymore, they just kicked me out today.
Okay.
And I was trying to get back in.
But is it cheaper than Monster and...
I don't know. I was trying to get back in, and I, I didn't go all the way through to see it.
Well, check it out, I would suggest one of them, whichever one is more cost-effective, so... Because you need an online presence, because that's where many people love, many people don't even look in the newspaper anymore, so...
Newspapers have changed.
And the Highway Supervisor, I don't remember what that's called, but make sure it's on that one too.
Oh, the Public Works Network?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What's that, what's that gathering that you, we went with, when you were in here for two years? Is that what you just talked about? Yeah, they might have a publication or something.
But most of those people live in town, they're happy where they are.
They are, no.
So...
We just need one disgruntled guy.
I don't know if you want somebody that's disgruntled. But, yeah, it only takes one, but you have to get that one, so...
Okay, well...
And thank you to you and Randy for going back. I like this better than the old one.
Yep.
I'm not feeling the warm fuzzies, though, yet, still, but, you know, it's a step.
Well, you might want to take the twenty-four-seven out of it.
Yeah, that is a little heavy duty.
That might help. The thing?
Yeah.
That was scheduled.
Twenty-four-hour emergency calls.
Twenty-four-hour emergency calls, although it does say you could be available or make arrangements for.
Yeah.
Suggests that there might be someone else willing to do it.
And I wonder if the board would also consider this, is that, I know we're trying to get this position built and say, "It's not gonna happen, you can outsource this." Is it possible that maybe the existing staff would just step up temporarily to take on some of that with the small retreats with salary, only temporarily? I know they're not interested in the full-time job, otherwise they would have applied for it to begin with.
I don't, I don't think that's my approach to them, but...
Right.
Possibility.
It's, I'm trying to look, trying to open up as much as we can in case we do...
No, I think it's a, I think, I think it's a good idea, I worded it a little differently when I thought about it, is that, you know, realizing they're gonna have to take on additional duties until such time as we find, but at the same time, you know, only if you bump up like that, you give a...
People will give some compensation.
You give them compensation for it, absolutely.
So, or if that's a consideration, we should broach it.
What is that noise?
I don't know, I don't know.
You can ask them.
Are we...
You can ask them, oh, I don't know what the thing, there's somebody downstairs, I don't know, it could be them. You can ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah, could you approach?
We're staying to say, "No."
It's Warren, right? And Pete, Pete's kinda split, and there's he full-time over there.
No, he's just full-time at Highway.
He just goes over and helps the transportation.
He just helps the... One time is half and half, if I remember that, yeah. Just say that with, we're trying, if it doesn't happen, we're gonna try to outsource things, but if you could just step up temporarily to do something...
Coordinate, because the other thing is, if Randy is amenable to staying on as a temporary on-call, if he's willing to still do the following part of it, you still have the same people you have right now.
Of course, yeah.
But you just need somebody to say, "Hey, it's snowing, we need to go out and make the call," so...
Yeah, that's, that's today. I think when we get into November, December, I think the two o'clock in the morning phone calls are gonna work. And on a pretty quick...
No, they have to be up anyways. They're either they're the ones that are calling, or they're the ones that are receiving the call. But either way, they're up, so...
I'm not on Randy.
He needs Randy.
Oh, Randy, well, that's why I say, we have to see if he's up for that, so I don't, I don't know. He, he mentioned that he would be interested in doing the temporary stuff in the wintertime, so...
When did, he didn't mention that to us.
He mentioned it to me.
Really?
Yes, across the road, when he told me about, the ad was not very...
Enthusiastic.
Yes, enthusiasm, and so, but yeah. But yeah, and he could say no, he could say yes. I think he still wants to do stuff with them, and also it depends in terms of, if we were to hire somebody, if that person is amenable to having the old supervisor back, sometimes people don't like that. So, some people are okay with it, some people aren't, so...
So if you can approach out those two, just to say the board is just asking.
Yep.
Let's move on.
The tamarack tree next to the annex, I had spoken with Mr. Stevens about that tree a while ago and suggested that we probably need to cut it down because it's dead. He said he would do that if the board said it was okay. I did notice that as part of the report from the TCVC about the Tam Forest and the sugar rickles and all of that, that there was a remark that the tamarack tree by the annex is dead. So...
Yes, we were officially notified by Mr. Quigley.
Now that a professional has determined that the tamarack tree is dead.
Is officially dead. What is the resonance, why? He just didn't whack it down?
Something about they were donated to the town in the early nineteen hundreds.
Okay, it was a donation or something, I got you.
So if the board is agreeable, I'll speak with Mr. Stevens and say that yes...
Is that second one?
Talk to the board and...
Yep, second one in for the road, I believe is, right?
Yes.
It's the second one in for the road.
There's another one? You can tell by looking at it.
There's another one that's only partly dead.
Partly dead, yes.
But I'm just speaking about the one that is really dead.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, you can tell, we can whack it down.
All right. Thank you. The notes were reflected, really dead.
Totally dead.
It's like Princess Bride.
Mostly dead.
Mostly dead.
Well, I can understand the little bit of reticence, the fact that somebody donated something, and now you gotta whack it down.
It's dead. It's dead.
And we did Betterard Gardens, I think that is everything. And we did Bitterick Gardens, I think that is everything.
Oh, my goodness.
There was a miscellaneous item that you.
So, we are down to the consent agenda? The miscellaneous item?
The miscellaneous item that you wanted to speak about with Julie, the Oyster Room meeting last week.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't know if, you wanna do it, if you were, they're wrong, but.
Whatever the board wants to do.
It was a report back, in terms of the meeting that Julian attended at the Durham Council Chambers last Thursday about the question of youth. Right, you took notes, I didn't.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't take too many notes, actually. The discussion was really mostly centered on moving forward and what that might look like. Durham still seems to be holding on to the request that they want to be able to appoint someone to the ORYA Board, and they might even still be withholding their money. Although they wanted to know where their money for the ice rink was. So, it was, and ORYA handed out a kind of lengthy document that talked about their organization and how it's structured, and how it works, and what their bylaws, the board's bylaws are. And one of the things that was discussed, I guess Durham never had an MOU or any kind of agreement with ORYA, so now they're putting one together. The school had some issue, not ORYA-related, but some big issue at one of the schools relative to an outside, not-for-profit group that had been using their facility, and the school was made aware that anyone that uses their facilities has to follow all the same rules as the church, relative to, not the church, as the school, relative to the ADA, relative to Title IX, relative to all kinds of things, and so they had to expend thousands of dollars in legal fees sorting through some problems, and they, they really gave us no more detail than that, so. But the upshot of that was that the school is looking into having everybody that uses their facilities sign these agreements where you have to agree to follow whatever these rules are. When I asked, well, was that just groups that had children, I guess I could see where if you, for example, used a school to run the scouts, or to have a daycare. And I said, well, is that gonna apply to the town elite? We use your facilities once a year for the Little River session, and there didn't seem to really be an answer that I heard, one way or the other. First I heard no, and then I heard yes. So, I don't know what's gonna be in the agreement and whether we even can follow it. Title IX doesn't apply to us, we're not a school, so, I don't know what that would be. But that was, that was really most of the conversation. Ben Jeans, who was kind of facilitating the meeting, said that they are talking about moving towards a model where the towns don't contribute anything. But they asked that the towns not pull the plug right now, because 18% of their financing comes from the municipalities, and so as they look into this, it may be that we trend our way into that. It will, of course, mean one of two things, either they raise the fees for all of the kids and the families that utilize the programs, and/or they do more fundraising. Because, I mean, they do fundraising now, but maybe they're just gonna have to increase.
That would be an answer.
What I'm guessing, though, is that they would still, to a certain extent, rely on the towns for facilities, so.
It'd almost affect it, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
There must choose.
There was also discussion of the formula that certain people seem to recall existed many, many years ago, but nobody can find any evidence of it. Certainly in the six years, six and a half years I've been here, I've heard talk, I've heard talk of this formula, but nobody, nobody can find it, nobody knows what it is, so.
It's on a piece of paper in my basement.
ORYA is going to look into how they might come up with a formula, so that everybody clearly understands, this is how we're calculating your contribution, your being the towns.
Yeah, another thing in terms of the meeting, one of the things that Town Minister and I talked about is because when we use the mass-based school, we have to pay.
That's right.
But I found out that, that Oyster Room uses this building for their meetings for bus drivers and stuff, and we don't charge them.
Ooh, this is not fair.
So, that's, I think, when Dr. Morse, I would suggest that when Dr. Morse comes to talk to us about budgets, then we ask that question, because quid pro quo.
Absolutely.
If your drivers wanna use this facility, which is convenient, because they're right down the road, that's fine. And, you know, they say they have to charge us because they have to have a custodian in it, come in and whatever, clean, open up the building, tear the building.
So do we.
So do we, so, but, you know.
Don't the teachers also use this building to me? Isn't it someone with the school, not just the bus people? They try to, they might have once, or they tried two months and then canceled, I can't. Because we just couldn't schedule it?
But I think that's a conversation to have. It's not tons of money, was it, $300?
Yeah.
It's not gonna kill them, but, you know.
But still.
But at one time. But the other thing that I found interesting, which was not mentioned during the meeting, is that Durham has been sued. They're gonna, they got letters from three of the people that are mentioned in the old, what is it, Bean Gate?
Beaning, yeah, the beaning story.
That Mr. Selig in the town elite, Durham, not the, Durham is being sued.
So, they're being sued.
Yes, for defamation, I believe. Defamation of character? 20,000, Durham supposedly has rejected that. But the thing is, that came out in the newspaper the next day.
Right.
So, but he didn't mention anything about that, so. I thought it was a good meeting, I thought it was a constructive meeting, Ben Jeans did a good thing. The other thing that, we got to the end of the meeting, and we had not talked about the Bean Gate at all, and I kind of forced the issue, and it was very uncomfortable.
Well, I mean, Matt, even before you, you raised that, Matt Glow did talk about the meetings that he had with the coaches, and how he was trying to move people forward, and that he did meet, or tried to meet, with the other two coaches, and I think one of them didn't have any interest in meeting, so.
That whole thing got just, got so out of control so fast.
It worked.
Anyway.
Interesting, oh, and that was not the only meeting we'll meet again, so, just, we're there for that, so.
What else is, oh.
Consent agenda.
Number eight.
So, consent agenda.
Now, can we talk about B?
You wanna take it out?
Well, there's tickets, and we kind of needed to determine who can use them.
So, unsolicited, I received an email through Eventbrite for, for the Rotary Fireworks in Durham to the VIP, I don't know whether it was VIP tent, the VIP event for the barbecue, and I then learned, I think I went on the website, that the value of the tickets is $100, because it's $50 a person to go to the VIP barbecue. And we received two complimentary tickets for having sponsored fireworks.
Frank nabbed me in the town clerk's office this morning, and he says, hopefully somebody can use them. What they did is, they're kind of changing their model a little bit, they're trying to get businesses to support the fireworks.
Totally.
And it's, oh, if you give us money, we'll give you this perk. And they were talking about the difficulty, because we're not the only town that contributed something. And they said, well, what about the towns that gave money? That's not the nation that's still giving us, you know, some support. So, their board determined that those particular towns would be giving those tickets, that's why we got them, so.
I have no interest in that.
I have no interest in that.
I'll use them, but if somebody else wants them more desperately, or wants to wrestle me out back, we'll.
No, that's, I'm gonna go to the fireworks, but you can go speak with the big boys.
Primacy inside, Eric, Primacy.
All right, I got a potato gun, I'm gonna fire off. I got more than that.
No problem.
You're welcome, too.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing it up, anyways.
So, send me, what did they, is it?
I forwarded the email.
Oh, so I just need that email?
Yeah.
Just print it out, right?
Yeah.
You could always call up Frank, I guess.
Yes, Frank will give me a.
Just report to us what really happened at the meeting.
How about pictures, pictures of?
I want pictures, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Here we go.
Here, we're rolling, baby, we're rolling.
So, under seat, can we ask the Little River who they would like to appoint in Sharonstead?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, Sharon gave a resignation from the Little River Advisory Committee. Can we ask them who, I don't know.
Do I remember? It is the member.
Yeah, the energy committee will, they'll deal with that, but the Little River, we appoint somebody to that group, I believe.
I thought the person came to us and then the board approved it, but we'll, we'll reach out.
Okay, just in terms of, you know, what, wherever the procedure is. Do I get top billing here?
Yes, we change the order.
Oh, my goodness.
Just to make sure everybody's paying attention.
Yeah, it's air-conditioned, right? They get a special barbecue, there's special sauce on those chickens.
It's delicious sauce. Well, Frank seems pretty jazzed. I'm not sure if they're gonna make any money, or if they're.
Well, it's a new, it's a new approach, but I understand, you know, standing by the door while they're asking for a donation is always a little hard to do, and some people just can't afford to make the donation, so. I, if he can pull it off, we found better one.
This one needs to go back.
Love it back.
It's missing, too.
So, I met our new police officer today.
Oh, great.
Comes from a whole family of police officers, well, that's nice.
Another is a police officer in Centerskafford, or someplace like that. Father is Barrington, uncle is.
Oh, was his father a chief?
No, was a sergeant. His uncle, I don't remember his uncle's name.
Nice young man.
But the son that's in Centerskafford, or wherever he is, he's coming to Barrington, too, so it's gonna be two of them down there, so.
Say again?
The son that's in Centerskafford?
Yeah.
Something like that, he's coming to Barrington, too, so he'll be at the same department as his father.
Is that it, we got them all?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Before you move on, I wonder if it would be appropriate to maybe have Town Administrator just write a letter of appreciation and thanks to the Meekers of all the hard work that they've done over the years?
Hmm, to who? The Meekers?
Yes, absolutely. It'd be just, it's a letter of appreciation and thanks, and then maybe at this point, we don't have to make a superficial, just have the chairman cite it for us all, at this time.
That's a good idea.
Because, you know, they've, over the years, they've done a lot of volunteer work.
I think in what, they say two months, they're gonna be moving into.
Yeah, we'll remove it, et cetera, yep. And she won the volunteer yearwork two years ago.
Okay. This is all done, that's all done. We're gonna go into closed session? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to enter into non-public session for RSA 91-A:32B. Roll call vote required.
Second.
Second, yes, thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Buckby?
Yes.
Mr. LaFour?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so I'll make a motion to seal the non-public session minutes.
Second.
Roll call vote required. Selectman Buckby?
Yes.
Selectman LaFour?
Yes.
Selectman Brown?
Yes.
Who else is on there?
Miscellaneous unfinished business?
Here he is, he's only goes.
I would like the permission of the board to use the logo to create some logo wear, where the heritage commission to sell. Any permission to use the logo?
Oh, that's just some random logo.
No, it's our logo.
It is?
There's a lot of white.
It's a lot of white.
It's white.
Sorry, that's the last word.
Oh, my gosh, I see. Yeah, that was, that's what was thrown in.
Trees in the back, yeah, trees, yeah, yeah, yeah. But it is the logo. Excellent.
Wait, I would write for, for X.
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion was to allow the heritage commission to create.
Make a motion to allow Mr. Buckby to utilize the, the selectmen, the heritage commission.
To use the town's logo.
To utilize the town seal.
Or logo wear.
Or, for what?
Logo wear.
Is that a word?
Logo wear.
Yeah, logo wear is a word.
Logo wear.
L-O-G-O.
I mean, is that the name of the company?
No, that's just, just logo wear.
One logo wear.
Mr. Buckby, can you provide detail on logo wear?
I gotta have.
Pyjamas? That's what I'm asking.
Probably shirts, I, I heard a request for a colored shirt, so that's a different.
I need a golf shirt. I need a golf shirt with that on there.
Oh, okay, all right, I'll see what I can do, what color?
Purple. That, that purple and red, you know, I want people to see me on a.
They're gonna see you, I'm right there. You're gonna stand out like a match head.
Okay, see what I can do, like a match head?
We still need a second.
Oh.
To the motion.
Can I get a second, can I get a second for that motion?
I'm seconded, I'm seconded.
Okay. And do you want?
There are a discussion, all in favor? All right, we gotta do all that.
Did you want that over the breast or in the center? I assume over the.
Over the breast, yes, for sure.
Well.
It's like a target, then. It's a logo shirt, the logo goes over the left side.
But for certain individuals, in the center is preferable to the side because of anatomical issues.
Well, no, all that does is stretch the logo, I don't see any problem.
Okay, that's fine.
Going down quick. I don't have a problem.
It's your plane.
Crash and burn.
Crash and burn, baby, crash and burn.
Okay.
Aye.
Where are we?
Getting the God sent. Call for a move.
Oh.
Getting, all in favor?
Aye, thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
Question. Man, I can't remember, did we ever set a date for like a staff cookout? Is there?
It's supposed to be, lunchtime was the consensus, but not a date.
Right.
They wanted to do lunchtime.
Yeah, when, when were you, what month were you thinking of holding this?
Some month, whatever, it doesn't really matter.
I thought we had talked about July, no?
No, then, we're kind of, we're kind of busy, you know, we got that other thing.
What other thing?
The other thing.
Oh.
Oh, yes, yes, we have to do that, we didn't adjourn yet. I make a motion that we.
Did you?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we increase the amount given for the party on July twenty-fifth from three hundred dollars to six hundred dollars?
Second?
Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. So you're all set with that?
Thank you.
Do you have a proposed time?
I don't know, maybe in the.
October? October, maybe?
Well, maybe chilly, October, maybe, you know.
That'd be great. It's chilly, we could have chilly.
Of course, in September, we have the fair.
That's early.
Fair's the eighth.
When is the fair?
Eighth of the day.
September, we can do it in August, yeah.
I think for me, it's a convenience of the staff. When can we get the most staff there? So, how about if you, we, we know the lunch. So, why don't you pull them and see, okay, we decided on lunch, let's decide on the date and find out when the most people can get there.
This is kind of vacation time for people, so.
So, maybe third week in September, I don't know, whatever works for them, I think.
Okay.
That's correct.
Well, then that's August then, so.
Depends on the day.
Right.
Better do a teaching schedule.
I got my second item today for the thing that I'm doing.
For a budget.
The thing.
The what?
The thing.
The thing that I'm doing.
The thing.
Yeah, the thing I'm doing, I might say.
I got an item for the thing, too. It hasn't showed up yet, but it's in shipping.
Okay, excellent, excellent. And there've been movement on the thing that you two are doing?
Yeah.
All right.
We got that thing straightened out.
Boy, this is gonna be something, isn't it?
I can't wait to see what the minister.
I can't wait to see what the minister about these things that's gonna go down there.
The board talked about this thing for a while.
This could get out of hand.
A short update for the TCVC, we're working on schematic design, um, information. So, we're progressing with that. We're waiting to see what happens in terms of how many people submit things, that's tomorrow. So, hopefully, um, the Town Minister will get a chance to get that comparison. We meet next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow. We can get your input, hopefully, in terms of, uh, the firms, and it should be on the discussion for the next board meeting, so we can take somebody.
We're getting, we're getting close for the ribbon cutting on the swap shop, too. The leaves and the sides and all of that.
Yep, 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 simply. You can move that forward.
That'd be nice. It looks good.
It's very good.
So, that'll be nice. Hopefully another week or so, we'll be able to do that. Okay. Anything else? Any other unfinished business? No, no, no. We make a motion to adjourn, ten seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't you love it?